It's now if you're ready, George.
Great, thanks. There we go. There we go. Oops.
I was just gonna full screen it, but I don't know if I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Oops, sorry, I better, I better start again, sorry.
You just go into the tab.
Yeah, just hit the tab.
Home?
No, no, next, next to tools.
Nick on the right, the one that says Vermont homeowner, yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Okay, so, yeah, so here we are talking about the Vermont Homeowner Assistance Fund, which is a fund that was being funded through the American Rescue Plan Act, which was passed earlier after the new administration came in. Do you want to go to the next slide? And we have experience at the Vermont Housing Finance Agency doing mortgage assistance, which was funded initially last year through the CARES Act, which was a separate pot of money. And we are actually currently running that program again, the 2020 version had some basic requirements. We were funded up to six months of past due payments. You had to make 100% a very median or less. And, you know, we got 636 households and funded, you know, a little over $4 million to folks in the course of, gosh, it was only four months before the money ran out. The median income was fairly low in comparison to the, you know, the area median. And we had a very good participation from folks who are younger and who are of the minority, you know, from the minority communities in the, in the state. We worked with a network of nonprofits, you can go to the next slide. We worked with a network of nonprofit service agencies to help folks with limited English proficiency or who were, had other issues, they might need some help with budgeting and financial help. The payments were made directly to the mortgage servicer. And as I said, the applicants generally were younger and more racially diverse than, and more likely to be disabled than the general population of Vermont. So that was last year's map. And then this year's map was relaunched just at the beginning of May, and we were given another $5 million to use to help folks. Again, this this version of map is a little bit different from the last time. It's basically the same eligibility requirements, though. We increased the amount of assistance to 12 months of past due payments. And the documentation for income was increased just a bit by asking folks who had already filed their 2020 tax returns to provide them to us as their evidence of what their 2020 income was. Most information requirements are based on self-certification and attestation. But given what we expect the requirements of the homeownership assistance fund to be, we wanted to test out how it would work if we were asking people for their tax returns. And I think so far it's been, it doesn't seem to have created too much of a burden on folks. Right now, that says we had 300 applications for $3 million of assistance. That was, slide was actually created a little bit ago. Now we're over 460 applications for $4 million in assistance. And it's only been, I think, 10 days or so since the slide was created. So the the demand has been high. So there is definitely a need out there for, for these funds. You can go to the next slide. And so we switch over to the Homeowner Assistance Fund program. Once the Mortgage Assistance CARES Act program is depleted, which it should be, as I would imagine by the end of this month. We, under the American Rescue Plan Act, Vermont qualified for $50 million out of this fund. And the goal of the fund is to prevent mortgage delinquencies and defaults, foreclosures, loss of utilities, home energy services, and displacement of homeowners experiencing financial hardship after January 21, 2020. So it doesn't necessarily limit itself to mortgage assistance and can be used for other types of assistance. And the funds are available until September of 2025. Part of the process for developing the program is that we need to create a Homeowner Assistance Fund plan, which we are required to submit to the Treasury by June 30. The document, and that's what we're here to talk about, is what should be in the plan. So discuss, you know, eligibility, eligible types of costs we can help people with, how we can set up the process for application and payment. Outreach and engagement are very important because obviously the plan, the program doesn't do any good to anybody who hasn't heard of it. So first we'll walk through just the basic rules that we're going to have to follow. And then we can talk about how we can best sort of work with those rules in developing the plan. The Homeowner Assistance Fund can be used for a number of things, as I said. So mortgage assistance, financial assistance to reinstate a mortgage or pay other housing-related costs relating to forbearance, delinquency, or default. So for example, if somebody is in default and is being foreclosed on, you know, we can use the money to pay not only the past due loan balances, but also servicer costs and legal costs associated with that in order to get the person out of foreclosure and back into a reinstated status. We can help with mortgage principal reduction regarding second mortgages provided by government or nonprofit. We can work to provide interest rate reductions on existing mortgages, help pay for delinquent property taxes to prevent tax foreclosures. We can pay for counseling and education by counseling centers. And sort of a general pot of assistance for utilities, internet service, insurance, homeowner association fees, condo association fees, and common charges, down payment assistance loan, and repayment of down payment assistance loans that were provided by nonprofit or government entities. We can also have programs to help prevent displacement due to the need for home repairs. So fixing a roof or fixing a porch or something like that, to prevent the house from becoming unlivable. Or to help households clear title, for example, if there've been issues with that over time have accumulated and caused the title to be unclear due to family issues or whatever. We can work with folks to, to help with that as well. The income limitation is that at least 60% of the funds that we get have to be used for folks making less than 100% of the, of the greater of the area median income or the national US median income. It's not clear yet specifically what the indexes are they're going to point to for that. But our sense is that we're working around these levels here for each of the counties in Vermont when it comes to what the income level will be that we have to work with. And as you can see, those are, you know, they're not particularly high. So these are definitely folks who are going to need, who would need some help. The remaining funds that aren't used for, for folks below that income level can be used to help socially disadvantaged individuals, which is defined as those who have been subject to racial or ethnic prejudice or cultural bias because of their identity as a member of a group without regard to their individual qualities. The social disadvantage must stem from circumstances beyond their control. And there is a rebuttable presumption that, that individuals who are Black Americans, Hispanic Americans, Native Americans, and Asian American and Pacific Islanders will fit within that category. So it's not, you know, so we, we can look at, at helping those groups as well at income levels that are higher than the, than otherwise, though as a general matter, we can't go above 150% of area median. So even for socially disadvantaged folks, we would still have an income threshold of to 150% of area median. So you can go to the next slide. The program has to be developed using data. We need a data-driven assessment of what the homeowner needs are in the state. And the program description and the methods for targeting really all need to be based on best practices and data-driven models. Same for the goals. We also need to include, you know, a description of our administrative readiness to operate the program. And we are looking at providing, getting a third-party provider to develop a website specifically for doing the intake and program management. And then also provide a budget overall for the administrative costs. And then the different program budgets to sort of guesstimate how much is going to be spent on the different types of, benefits that will be given out. So the next slide. The data-driven assessment basically is intending to get to the answers to these various questions about the characteristics of the homeowners, who we should include, who is likely to fall through the cracks, what kind of performance goals should we try to set? You know, just basically, you know, what's the net we should be casting for who can be engaged in, in designing these programs? And how do we define and determine equity when it comes to the way in which the benefits are being distributed to make sure that we engage with everyone in the state? Just for sort of some background, if you, anyone is interested, you can look at our webpage for the Mortgage Assistance Program, which is www.vhfa.org/map. There are reports also on, on who has been served through MAP on our website. The NCSHA, which is our National Representative Group, has a page on the Homeowner Assistance Fund. And the US Treasury has materials on the Homeowner Assistance Fund as well. So I would definitely recommend, if anybody's interested, to go, especially to the Treasury site has some, has, they're very good about putting out what their guidances are and, and what their requirements are going to be. Unfortunately, they don't have a lot of guidance yet, though. The word on the street is we're going to get a significant amount more, hopefully by the end of next week. And if you have anything that you want to submit to us when it comes to comments or proposals for proposed programs or, or any data that you want to include, you can email me directly, gdmas@vhfa.org, or you can send it in the mail to me at the Vermont Housing Finance Agency address. This is the second public hearing we've had to discuss the half plan. And we are really glad for the folks who attended on the 3rd, and we're happy to have you guys here today. We are planning to do another session towards the end of the month when we are, when we have put together a half plan to get any feedback on, you know, and any thoughts on the plan itself before we submit it to Treasury. So with all of that, we can hopefully not have any further long-winded discussions by only one person and have more of a conversation. And I don't know who, I know some of y'all, maybe we can just do a quick introduction for folks, since there's only a few people. And then everyone can have their chance to, to make their, their contribution. We can start with Karen Rubin.
Hi, so I am with Champlain Housing Trust, and I am the Housing Stabilization Counselor right now.
Hi.
Hi. Not sure what else I can tell you.
Did you have any specific things that you wanted to bring to this? Or was this more a matter of just being interested in coming to hear?
Being interested, there's a lot to keep track of with all the different programs. And the more opportunities I have to learn the specifics of each. The one thing that came into my mind when you were speaking is that there are always these, these really together people who can manage homeownership and all the programs really well. And then there are these other people who don't hear about it or don't know about it or have trouble connecting all that stuff. And I feel like as soon as you open this up, all those super-together people jump on it and use up the funds. And then by the time some of these other people figure it out, it's, it's over. And that's my concern. So I wonder if your marketing could focus on like rural banks, rural town offices, you know, in, inside the cities, maybe, you know, start off with the, the harder-to-reach group. You know, like I have a lot of people showing up now who have like literacy issues or don't have access to technology, so can't upload things. And they have missed out on a whole year's worth of benefits and now trying to catch up but need quite a lot of service. That's the, those are the people that we somehow have to communicate with.
Right, I mean, it may be that, you know, one of the things that we, I think, are learning as we're going through this is that we shouldn't rush to just try to jump out there with something. Because for a number of reasons, one of them is that this is going to be, because of all the different kinds of things it can cover, technologically and operationally, it's going to be difficult to set up. And we don't want to rush into it and then have a lot of problems. But maybe the benefit of that also can be that we can sort of get the word out more before the program actually opens and get people ready to apply. And obviously, your group and the other NeighborWorks folks would all be folks that we would be looking to, to help do that. Because, you know, you all obviously work with a lot of the people who need a number of different kinds of assistance, not just with mortgages or, or something else. So, yeah, I mean, we'll definitely want to help, have you guys help us out with that.
Are you still thinking this will launch at the end of June or early July?
No.
Didn't sound like it.
No.
When do you think?
Well, if we can manage to get enough guidance from Treasury that we feel comfortable actually submitting a plan on June 30th as opposed to submitting for an extension, I would imagine that we would open this up sometime in August at the earliest. And that assumes that the process of, you know, developing the website and putting together, you know, setting up the actual operation goes in a way that we feel makes us ready. Because I don't, like I said, I don't want to just try to rush something out there and then, you know, end up with a pileup of all different kinds of issues because people didn't think through all the various scenarios that we might have to deal with. So we're trying to be thoughtful about it. And it were, we would like to do it in the middle of August, but it may be September. But I think that it would only be because we were trying to make sure we're doing this right the first time. And if you have anybody who does need help, you know, obviously we have resources, if somebody needs to have assistance now, we have the Mortgage Assistance Program in place. So if there's somebody who, who is definitely needing some assistance now, please, you know, refer them.
Yeah, of course.
So, great, Tricia?
Hi, I'm Tricia Leon with Neighbor Works of Western Vermont. I'm in the office, apologize for background. Which I, we used to say about being at home with folks, now it's the opposite. Yeah, I'm here just to kind of glean some information as Housing Counselor, working with folks, the Housing Stabilization Program, responsible for like funneling people through the different programs. So I just want to make sure that I'm up to date on what is going on, what's coming, you know, coming down, the timelines and what we can expect. And I am a little concerned about that the Mortgage Assistance may be coming to a, maybe wrapping up by the end of June potentially, as it's getting used up. And then that, that window of time before the new program is up and running. But I also do appreciate going about it thoughtfully and deliberately because it will make the process smoother for us. On the, yeah, for us all, in the application process. So I'm really just here to, to get some information and appreciate the opportunity to, to hear about the program and ways that we might be able to help with it.
Okay. Tina? Tina Cook?
Hi, yeah.
Hey.
Took me a second. I'm Tina Cook, I am representing the NAACP Redland area and myself, really. So a couple of things, I noticed that there might be a little overlap with the Mortgage Assistance Program and the HAF as well. But with the HAF, I was noticing there's, the one part I was really looking for was the Down Payment Assistance. Yeah, you know, I, I know that a lot currently with the Benny Mae and Freddie Mac, there's, you know, options for low or extremely low-income people for assistance. But that one piece, the Down Payment Assistance was missing. And I know that it is done with the help, with the money to move. There was a money-to-move program done through the, the Housing Authority.
The rental assistance, yeah.
Yeah, yes. I, I would love to see something like that modeled in there. And because that's where I see the need, is we're going to have a influx of people who are needing housing. And I'm seeing that a lot of people could probably, you know, swing with that jumpstart, that boost.
Right. Well, I mean, I think that that's, that's a great idea. We'll definitely put it in the list. My only concern would be that the Homeowner Assistance Fund kind of bills itself as being a fund to help people who are existing homeowners avoid getting foreclosed out or unable to use their housing as opposed to helping people get in, you know, buy housing. But that said, I mean, if you have someone whose housing is falling apart and is there a way to, is there a way to sort of shoehorn in the idea of, well, maybe it's better to help them, you know, find a new place?
Mostly what it is, is the BIPOC, a lot of us got foreclosed on.
Right.
A victim to the predatory lenders. So, you know, we're sitting in this limbo. And so I'm looking at it from a uniquely different perspective, you know, the BIPOC perspective, you know, of what happened here in Vermont. And, you know, I would love to see, you know, maybe some of the funds set aside so that we can get that outreach. Because historically, you know, BIPOC have not been able to trust the system. So it's going to be a lot harder to do that deep outreach. But I think we can do it.
Well, I think that that's going to be a matter of program flexibility and how much, what the Treasury tells us we can do. You know, obviously, we would love to include something like that. The more people who can buy affordable housing, the better. And that often means, just because of the way the housing prices are, that for, to make a house affordable, you need Down Payment Assistance and, for folks. So, you know, when we have a, for our programs, and I think a number of, there are different programs out there to do Down Payment Assistance. But, you know, this is obviously a nice big pot of money. So it's, it's always good to, to figure out new ways to use it. So we'll, I mean, it's definitely something we can look for. And hopefully we'll have the flexibility to do it. Nancy?
Hello.
Hi, Nancy.
So Nancy Gelman, Homeownership Director and Counselor at Neighbor Works of Western Vermont. I was just looking to, looking forward to hearing more about the new program that's coming out. And I'm glad to hear that they're going to include the Down Payment Loans through nonprofits because people do get behind on those as well.
Right.
One question I have about it is, I know none of the other programs allowed for the home equity loans. Is this going to allow for that?
It looks to me like, yes, you can use the money for home equity loans. There's even one comment we had gotten was to try to also use this money to help folks who have reverse mortgages and who may have gotten behind on their, their payments and therefore putting their reverse mortgage in jeopardy because they maxed out on their, on their equity that they can have in it. And so, for example, if they've missed their property taxes or they missed different payments that they're required to make. So, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I can understand the lines, the home equity lines of credit not being an allowable use, but the actual home equity loans, they can still be foreclosed on.
Right, I mean, and they, we'd like to make sure that it's clear to folks too that this is also can cover chattel mortgages, like for people who own mobile homes. And we're trying for people who are in parks, home, mobile homes in parks, to make sure that the idea that the lot rent is considered a common charge that we can help them with directly. So that if they, you know, if they own their unit, they can come to us both for help with the loan payment on the unit plus if they're behind on their lot rents, to come to us for that too. Because right now, that's, you know, split. They, with the Mortgage Assistance Program, we can only really help them with their loan payment, their lot rent. They can go to the State Housing Authority for their rental program, but that's, you know, a different application and a different group of people. And so it, it would make it easier if we could all have it be all in one place. Yeah, chattel, exactly, yeah, that's what it's called.
And I'm looking forward to seeing the draft.
Yeah, well, we're, one of the things we're supposed to be getting next week from HUD is a template that we're supposed to be using for these plans and a, and guidance on how it's supposed to be set up. So I think that that will help us. And hopefully, there will be a template that will be easily readable for everybody and not some weird federal form that. that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, other than to the bureaucrats in Washington who have to read it and to nobody else.
You know, that's what you're getting, right?
Yeah.
I just, just saying.
We'll have to turn, we'll have to turn it into, into PowerPoint slides. So, okay, sorry, Galen, I think we haven't heard from Galen yet.
Hi, everybody. I am a homeowner in Essex, and I am looking for information to see how it might be relevant for my particular situation. And also, I am sharing support for the S-79 bill that may be revisited on June 22nd.
Is that?
I have a.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a recalcitrant tenant.
Oh. Okay, so S-79 is the, is the rental registry bill?
Yes, with the little writer of having some exemptions for the eviction moratorium for people in my situation. There aren't many of us, but I am very happy learning about half and how it's moving forward. So thank you.
Yeah. And I mean, and one of the things to, to think about is that half will allow for payments to, for one to four unit buildings. So I'm not sure what your situation is, but if you have a, if, if it's, you know, a duplex with a owner on one side and a tenant on the other, and it's all one mortgage, it's still going to be covered through the Homeowner Assistance Fund. So that if for, you know, your tenant isn't making payments, or you're having problems because, you know, people are out of work, it, it's not a matter of, it can only be for people who are single family residents in a single family house, and that's it. So.
Interesting. Well, it's, it's a condo. It's a single unit. And it is, yeah. So, but moving forward, I'm looking to learn more about half.
Right. Well, good. And definitely, if you, you should definitely check out the, if you haven't yet, the State Housing Authority's rental programs, because they, they're pretty broad, too.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
And last, I, Asher, have you spoken yet?
He actually can't. He doesn't have a mic.
Oh.
Here explained, he's a student at MMMU who's doing a, doing a little research on affordable housing. So, um, so we're glad to have him. I want to make sure everybody knows that this, I am using Maura's login information today to host this meeting. I am not Maura Collins. I am Leslie Black Lamo, who's a big fan of Maura Collins and has worked for her for many years. But, but I am simply using her Zoom account today. So that's, that's confusing. And then I also wanted to mention that the slides that George showed are up on our website. And so easy to get to, we actually have a webpage devoted to the Homeowner Assistance Fund already. It's, it's bhfa.org/news/half, and I'll put it in the chat. But, but that's where you can get to these slides right now. It's called Meeting Materials, and they're listed, listed on that page.
Tina, did you have your hand up?
I did, but I got distracted with the fact that you're sending the slide with all the wonderful links. But I'll remember it and I'll come right back. I did remember. Are people going to be able to receive maybe assistance with moving if they have to move? Because I know that a lot of the buildings were, like, for instance, you know, the, there was several places that were closed down due to the facilities not being up to human standards. So, or just, you know, even say someone's house is so damaged that they need to move. Is there anything like that?
George, you're muted. Still muted.
I don't know how that happened. One of the things it could help with is, for example, if someone is needing to do a workout with their lender, and, you know, part of it is that, you know, they're going to need to do a short sale or a deed in lieu of foreclosure. But because the equity in the house might be less than the amount of the debt, I can see maybe we could work with folks in, you know, resolution of their case that way. But, you know, as I said, the money is really supposed to be helping people stay in, you know, not so much helping people transfer around. So it's, it's going to be a matter, like I said, it's going to be a matter of the guidance that HUD, HUD provides us as to how broadly we can, we can use that, that, that funding that way. But I understand your point. I mean, there, you know, once it's gone so far, maybe it's best to just help these folks.
Start fresh.
Somewhere else, yeah.
Yeah. Be interesting to see, you know, look at the demographic, you know, we can, is there a way to pull, you know, who are homeowners and what state they are and their taxes? And, you know, I mean, is that information that would be available, like the median income you're able to collect, a lot of data?
Yeah. If only, if only they were all out there. I mean, yeah, I think that would be great. One of, another good thing, hopefully, is that Treasury is going to be providing us with the database, the data stores that they're looking to have us use. So we can all be working off the same, you know, data sets when we're trying to develop our programs in all of the various states. Because what they're looking for is some level of standardization when it comes to at least, you know, how did you get to your program and the kinds of things that, that you're going to do. So that may be a good place to start for thing, you know, for information regarding, you know, income levels and issues for folks who are in the foreclosure process in the different states.
Do we have a model? Has anyone done something like this before?
This kind of program?
Yeah.
Yeah, no. That's, that's why we're all sort of feeling our way through, trying to figure out, you know, what, what can we do? And how can we do it? And how can we do it in a way that gets the most needed help to the most people? And I think, you know, the point generally of making sure that the word is out there and we get people prepared for it, and that folks have a chance to get themselves organized and ready to apply before we open the window necessarily, so that it isn't just those who are sort of good at filling out paperwork and have good internet connections, jump into the front of the line just because. I think that's, that's definitely a good, a good point to start with.
Is there a way to be sure that we are able to get the invite for the June 22nd meeting? Or will that kind of go out to a lot of people?
I think that, I mean, Leslie, go ahead. Why don't you just talk about it?
Yeah, I can, I can definitely make sure you all are on the list, to the extent that I have your contact information. But we'll also put the word out just exactly the way we did about the meetings this week with our VHFA News Blog and with some communication directly to organizations. So we'll use the same, same networks. At a minimum, we'll use at least as many networks as we did to set, to let people know about these meetings. We'll do the same thing for the, the final meeting to review the draft plan.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
And we have a new person just added in, Marie Van Druinen. This is a, this is a very small thing. You're not, you're not required to talk if you don't want to. But I, since we're all just having this more as a conversation than anything else.
I appreciate it. I was just on the phone with a client, so my apologies for not making it on time. I'm Marie Van Druinen, the Housing Retention Specialist with Winem Windsor Housing Trust. So I just want to get updated on what's going on. So with the HFA, so.
Okay.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming. And we were talking generally about the Homeowner Assistance Fund program that we're trying to set up. And, you know, different ideas for the types of programs or specific questions somebody might have. Did you, did you guys have any sort of thoughts about either what you're seeing as a need that we might want to look into, or how we can design the program to meet some issues that you're, you're seeing come up?
I know personally that my experience with clients lately has been that they just want to be updated on their application and what's going on. That's one of the biggest questions. And I'm sure that Karen and Tricia could probably agree to that, even Nancy. So how is it, can, how, what do we need to do in order to get an update on an applicant's status?
This is for the Mortgage Assistance Program that we currently are running?
Actually, both.
Okay. Well, the Mortgage Assistance Program, I'll put it that way, because that's actually up and running and is for real. The statuses are, they, they are notified when their status changes. And the process would be for them to go back into their account and look for the status message, you know, saying what, what exact, what has changed and why. I would say that as a general matter, I think it's spelled out in the FAQs, the, the, the minimum sort of turnaround on a lot of these is probably like 30 to 45 days. So I would not, you know, for anybody who's applied, it's not sort of immediate. I mean, you guys know what it's like working with mortgage servicers and getting information from them and trying to figure out what, how much needs to be paid, and are they going to accept it? And, you know, all that stuff. It just takes a while. So my, to the extent that you're, you're getting questions from folks who have applied and are wondering, you know, well, I haven't heard anything, other than they got my application and everything's complete, it, we're working on it. They're welcome to call. There's a, there's an phone number that they can call or they can send an email to the, to the box. But the answer they're going to get is basically, you know, we're working on it. And like I said, you know, the, the 30 to 45 day window is, is, you know, that's about right. So I would, so that's what they should be thinking about. Because it does just take a while to, to get these in the system and then actually get them approved and funded.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, so the Mortgage Assistance Program is only for past due amounts. Is that going to be the same for the half?
Well, that's an interesting question, and we're not quite sure. There's both a technological issue with that, you know, paying, keeping payments going for folks as opposed to just doing a one time sort of get all your problems solved at once kind of situation. And also generally, whether or not that's even permitted. I think it will, well, I don't know what to think. I haven't seen a whole lot of guidance from, from them. I would think that there would be some way to set that up, in the sense that I think that the program will probably be broad enough to allow that kind of thing. Technologically, whether or not that's going to work, you know, we've never done that before. There was, in the last crisis, which unfortunately was not that long ago, in the 2008, there was something called the Hardest Hit Fund, which we did not get here in Vermont, but a number of states did use that. And some of those states, not all of them, but some of them did develop programs where they were using the Hardest Hit Fund to make ongoing payments on behalf of borrowers, not just sort of a single catch-up payment, but then ongoing payments as well. In every case, it was limited. You know, there was always maximum caps on, on the types of, on the amount of assistance anybody could get, or a maximum cap on the number of payments that they were going to make on your behalf. So they'd do maybe three or something like that. It wouldn't be just, it wouldn't go on for an extended period. But, you know, part of it has to do with what the servicer will accept as well, because these are considered third-party payments. And so they have a, they have to then do their own set, sets of coding to accept those kinds of payments if somebody's not already behind. So there are a lot of issues with that. I think we, I definitely would like to look into that. I certainly, we're talking to folks who had that in their hardest-hit programs. And I really like to figure out how that can happen, because that is an issue with, with MAP, our current program that I see, is that folks who applied and got assistance last summer or last fall, they're back now. And, you know, they're saying, well, I haven't been able to make a payment since, since, since then. And so they're backed up again. And then, you know, as soon as you get them caught up, are they going to fall into the hole one, one more time? So with the size of the fund that we have, I'd like to see if we can have a benefit size per person that would allow for that kind of thing, not only getting them caught up, but then also being able to do ongoing payments to the extent possible.
I think that that need is becoming kind of dire, because a lot of those people who didn't hear about it the first round and got a forbearance are now having, their forbearance is coming to an end, and they have to pick up the payments again, and they're not able to. And for some people who didn't get a forbearance and who like spent their last penny to keep their mortgage current, which I have some of those too, I've actually said, you only have until June 31st to request a COVID forbearance, so do it now.
Yes.
Then we'll work on the MAP application and pay that. And they're kind of like, wait, so you want me to get behind and then catch it up? And there's some risk. It's a little bit of a gamble when I tell people that, because what if that MAP money is gone?
Right.
And they, you know, so I was like, don't wait, we can't wait six months to apply. And now what, from what you're saying, maybe we can't even wait three months. So they're literally going to have to apply month to month, which is scary. You know, and I know several of them will be back to work full-time, but like one guy works in a restaurant, and it's just not up and running yet.
Right.
So there's stuff like that. And then the other question is, how tightly do, do people have to prove that they were affected by COVID? Because I think like Tina said, there's a lot of people who've been, you know, sort of shunted in the economy for a long time, for whom this could be an opportunity to catch up.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe it isn't COVID, but it's just life. Can we help those people with this fund?
Well, interestingly, it says that the, I mean, and this is a quote, this is on the slide, one of the slides that I read through, that I'm sure was super fascinating. But this is a direct quote from the, from the Act. It talks about, "The purpose of the fund is to prevent mortgage delinquencies and defaults and foreclosures, blah, 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 for homeowners experiencing financial hardship after January 21, 2020." So it doesn't necessarily say it has to be a COVID hardship. And it doesn't necessarily, I mean, unlike some of the other programs, I don't think that there's necessarily has to be a very strong connection between, you know, saying, well, I got sick and that's why I fell behind, or I specifically lost my job because of COVID. It's just, I've been experiencing hardship since January 21, 2020. I'm hoping that that's how that works. Because I don't want to get in the business, we certainly don't want to get in the business of, well, no, you hadn't been making your mortgage payments for the last two years. So, you know, why should we help you now? Because of course, COVID affected everybody. I mean, the- Because of course COVID affected everybody, I mean, the economy went in a huge spiral. So how could anybody get caught up in the last year and what, four months? So I'm hoping that it stays very loose and that it be limited to. Just, you know, if you've been having a financial hardship, you've been having a financial hardship, and if that's just a continued financial hardship. Okay, that's fine. So fingers crossed. Fingers crossed that we're allowed to do that. So far for the CARES Act, you know, it's been self attestation, I mean, we have said it's. COVID-related, because that's a requirement of the act, but, you know, it hasn't gone down to us having to like. Call people's employers and, you know, get back up for it, it's it's really more a matter of, you know. That that's you, what you're telling us is what happened to you.
I'm wondering if I could just ask a question, I know you mentioned that part of this funding counseling may be a part of, or would be a part of this. And I know we were talking about, you know, the importance of stabilizing folks so that it's not just they they able to. Make the payments when they're getting the assistance, they're not able to in between when they're not receiving assistance. You know, obviously, the objective is to help people just stabilize that, so they can have a plan of action that's workable for them in the long term. Is there any, is there going to be any type of counseling requirement or is that just something that's going to be like a separate? Say pool or objective?
Well, I don't, that that is a discussion among the various states, some of them want to require counseling. Some of them are not going to have any rules about counseling and not even really work all that closely with. The housing counselors in their states. For the Mortgage Assistance Program, I mean, we don't require housing counseling. But obviously, we encourage you guys to work with these folks and to the extent that they're telling us that when they apply. That, you know, I worked with Winem Windsor Housing or I worked with CHT or, you know. That that gets put on their application and then we turn around and and we provide some funding to to you all. By, you know, per application. I would think that at least we would continue to do that, right? That to the extent that you're working with somebody and they indicate that, that we would. Provide some funding per applicant. That self-reports that way. I don't want to necessarily require people to go to housing counseling simply because. I'm worried that there are some people who just would make, that would feel like that was too much of a burden, right? That, you know, all they want is a simple something and why should I have to go make appointments and go through all of that? So that's sort of the way I'm falling on it, but I'm, can be convinced either way.
No, I'm not, I wasn't asking the question because I already had an opinion one way or the other, even though, you know. Obviously, there's benefit to housing counseling or it wouldn't. But, but yeah, so if it's going to work kind of like on a similar model, like, well, we can connect to folks to help them access the program and that's great.
Yeah.
And can I ask one other question? Sorry, I believe it was on your slides and you mentioned it, property taxes. So this program has the potential to help with property taxes that are not escrowed in, is that correct?
Well, yes, and the the benefit of the MAP program, we can, through MAP. Fund past due property taxes, but it has to be for people who have mortgages, because the idea is it's mortgage assistance. But it was kind of unfair, somebody didn't escrow their taxes and paid their taxes directly. But we're also paying a mortgage, and they were keeping up with their mortgage payments, but they let their property taxes fall behind, couldn't we help them out with that? So we were like, okay, we'll help them out with that, but that was as far as we could go. In this case, you won't have to have a mortgage, you can just, you're, if you're somebody who, you know, especially older folks, maybe who don't have mortgages anymore. But who do have found themselves in the position of falling behind on their property taxes. Or their, or their utilities, their water and whatever, we can, we will be able to help with that, for sure.
That's great, thanks.
I just want to verify, so this new program can help with up to twelve months?
The current Mortgage Assistance Program that we're running right now, the maximum benefit is twelve months. It was six months last year, but it's been more time, so we just increased the, we increased the cap. For the Homeowner Assistance Fund, I think what we're going to have to do is set a dollar limit, you know. Because it's not just based on individual mortgage payments, we're just going to have to say, okay, well. Everybody can get up to X dollars worth of benefit and and go from there. We're trying to figure out an amount, that's another thing that we're sort of looking at our other sister states for as well. Is, you know, how they're setting their limits and the data will obviously help us with that as well. As to, you know, what kind of issues are people facing and what are the amounts they're facing? And do that plus a little bit of a cushion as being sort of what we're seeing as as the as the cap for for benefits.
And I'm going to have to be negative Nancy for a minute.
Go ahead. I'm here to listen.
I disagree with not requiring, especially when you're helping somebody with. You know, that's been in crisis for a long period of time.
Yeah.
Not requiring the counseling, because, you know, if they've been having a hard time for the last couple of years. Trying to get back on track, I think they're still going to struggle, you know, once they get all this assistance. They're still going to struggle with readjusting their budget and making sure that they're staying on track.
Yeah. No, and that's the, yeah, that's the opposite, it's sort of like, why give them all this money if they're just going to get into trouble next month, right? So isn't there?
I think offer the, offer this, you know, the training, the assistance, don't try to force it on people. Because most people would probably openly request that kind of help, like, they don't want to get back in that situation again.
Well, there's definitely ways we can encourage it for sure, right? So, do we? I mean, I see your point, Nancy, I mean, like I said, we have plenty of people who we've helped last year and are back today. Now, whether or not they could have done anything.
It was the same thing when we went through the foreclosure crisis, when we were doing foreclosure counseling, you know.
Yeah, but.
Help people get back on track and then, you know, because they didn't make the adjustments that, you know, they should have in their budget. Then they're back in trouble again, so.
Well, this, and this fund is different, right? Because we can sort of help people fund into mortgage modifications. Like if they need to make some payments and then enter into a modification of their existing mortgage, I mean, that's, that's great. But they need to know, okay, well, I can still afford this modified mortgage and three months from now, I'm not going to be in the hole again. And, you know, facing more problems. And so I I understand what you're saying, Nancy. And I think definitely we'd have to, we'll have to look at how we can best encourage counseling in those. You know, in situations where it absolutely would make the most sense, which I think is, you know, where they have long-term liabilities that they're still going to be facing. Even after the payment comes, to get them out of the hole, you know, they need some help. And figuring, making sure that they're going to be able to to deal with things in the future. So, yeah.
I just had to put my.
No, no, I I appreciate it. I know you guys do a lot of good work with with folks doing that, but. You know, so I, and I want to encourage that for the people who need it, for sure. So. I think we were for an hour, right? Our hour is is up, I thought with this small group, we'd probably be done in twenty minutes, but you guys are are great. Lots of good ideas and and thank you for the great conversation, I appreciate, we appreciate everybody coming. And like I said, we're planning on having another session toward the end of the month. When we have a plan developed that we'd like for everyone to have had a chance to look at and give us some feedback on. And I think there are some closing, are there closing technical comments we're going to make, Leslie?
No, I'll just, I I will, for all of you whose email I have. I will make sure that you get the invitation to the next public hearing so that that we can review the plan together. And we we are recording this, but I don't, I don't quite know what we are going to be doing with the recording. Of this public hearing, we we just know that we wanted to do it in case we weren't able to take notes about your good ideas. Fast enough and in case, in case we needed to refer back to it, but the slides are up on our website. So if you want to see George's slides, you know, go, you can pop on over there, that's it.
Okay, great, thank you, everyone. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Stopping the recording now.